We'll move forward. Okay, it's now 7:08, a little bit late start for the time and place schedule for the December 14, 2021 regular meeting of the Planning Commission in the City of Royal Oak. And I will call the meeting to order. And if we can proceed with the routine, we'll go around the board here and please state your name for the record and your location.
Ann Bieke, Royal Oak.
All right, next.
Charlotte Douglas, Royal Oak.
All right, next.
Paul Curtis, Royal Oak.
All right.
Eric Klooster, Royal Oak.
Mike Fournier, Royal Oak.
All right, I'm Gary Casada. I'm in Royal Oak. And Mr. Gantina will be afforded opportunity to put his name on the record when he gets here. Okay. First thing is the approval of the November 9, 2021 minutes. If you've had a chance to look at these, if there's any changes, comments, discussion, or a motion from the commission.
I would move to approve the minutes.
Is there a second?
Support.
All right, any further discussion? All right, seeing none, we'll call for the vote to approve the minutes from November 9, 2021 regular meeting. We'll call the vote here. Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
You're speaking?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Klooster?
Yes.
And I'm also voting yes, so the motion passes and the minutes for November 9 are approved. Before we take another step here, is there anything that any of the commissioners would like to add to the agenda tonight? Ms. Bieke?
Woodward Avenue, just a quick update because I said I would do a little research on that.
All right, we'll put that at the end. Thank you. Anything else? All right, seeing nothing else, I ask Ms. Schwanger if there are public comments on non-agenda items.
Chair Casada, members of the planning commission, there was no public comment called in at all today.
Oh, so none, okay. All right, that being the case, we'll move on to new business. The first item is a public hearing for a special land use permit and then a site plan, SP 21-12-19. This is at corner of Main and Lincoln. Mr. Twing, can you give us a preview here? Sure, I can go through it. I don't see the petitioners admitted yet. Have they been admitted? Or do you want me to do that, Carol?
If you could, Tim, I don't see anything that matches the names on the agenda. I have made you a co-host.
Okay, you're saying the petitioner is not present?
I'm saying I don't know if they are the name on the agenda and the names of the people in the weight room are not connected in any way. But if Tim knows, he can perhaps let them in.
Let me just look then, quick. Well, hang on. I guess Ron's not. Is there anyone else that needs to be admitted for the first case at 7:35 South Main Street?
There's actually, there's actually two people. There's the civil engineer and the owner.
I need their names because they didn't log in based on the contact info they gave us.
Yeah, Mr. Sam Baydon is the owner. And Jesse is the civil engineer.
Ron, you'll have to wait a minute until the next, next item. All right, I think we've got everybody coming in now that's part of this case. Looks like it. I see Jesse.
Yes, and Mr. Baydon.
Yeah, that's, that's not, that's not what we had coming in, as Carol said. But anyways, to kind of give the background on it, this case is, involves a piece of property that's on the northeast corner of South Main and East Lincoln. It is in the Central Business District as far as the zoning district. Currently, there's gas station pumps and canopy, as well as building that previously held a convenience store and repair or garage service area. The petitioner is proposing to demolish all of those structures and remodel or rebuild with new structures with a convenience store, the outdoor display, sales areas, as well as the pump islands. As we did indicate in your report, petitioner did go to the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting on October 14 to get a few variances that they needed in regards to the use, continued expansion of the automobile, gas station related activities that are not allowed in the Central Business District. So they did obtain those, that variant at the zoning board appeals. They also obtained a parking variance. I believe the requirement was for 24 spaces and the petitioner has 11 on the site plan and the zoning board did grant a waiver of 13 spaces. The zoning board also granted a waiver for the outdoor sales area. So all of those issues in regard to this site plan have previously been dealt with at the Zoning Board of Appeals. The issue in terms of a special land use in front of the planning commission this evening is in relation to the sale of alcoholic beverages at dislocation. That is a special land use in the CBD and that's really what the special land use item is in front of you. The convenience store itself is a permitted use. So that's not an issue other than related to the site plan. As I said, there were several variances granted. Terms of the site plan itself and reviewing it, let me just look down here real quick. Couple of the items that the planning commission can look at in terms of the site plan and then staff's recommendation. Primarily, the one issue the staff was looking at was there is a proposed exit service door on, out of the building towards East Lincoln, basically in the southeast corner of the building. That staff is recommending removal and place in an alter location. Primarily there, the concern from staff is that loading and unloading would occur from the Lincoln Avenue right of way. So we would like to see that removed and put in another location, possibly switching the restrooms that are proposed in the north part of the building with the storage area. In terms of the other site plan issues that are in front of the planning commission, obviously, the planning commission has discretion in terms of whether the proposed landscaping is sufficient. There is a 10-foot, a green belt around the parking lot adjacent to Lincoln Avenue, and I believe it's five feet along South Main Street. And you'll see the landscape plan as part of your package. The outdoor display area is depicted on the plan. The one item that was not clear and staff's recommending a number on or a number that the planning commission came up with would be to limit the firewood area, firewood sales area to an area of two feet by five feet. Again, those sales areas are in the front of the building along the proposed 10-foot sidewalk that's right in front of the building. The last item that I would point out from an informational standpoint is in regards to signage. We will be required to comply with the sign ordinance and there may be several items that will be back in front of the planning commission after they've applied for those signs. This sign area does not allow freestanding signs in it. So you'll see several of those potentially back in front of you once they've been rejected from the building department. I guess then, the last item I would point out is we're recommending that all lighting that complies with the lighting provisions of the ordinance, but in specific requiring that any lighting under the canopy be recessed into the canopy and not be flush mounted or hang down below the canopy. The purpose of that is to get away from having potentially any glare or visibility. Those are the items as far as the staff reports that I wanted to touch on for the planning commission. If you have any questions of me in regards to plans or the special land use issue, I'd be happy to address them. Well, I'd like to take this one issue at a time, of course. I appreciate your presentation there. As far as the special land use goes, even though it's brought up in the staff report that this is a non-conforming use, that's really not before us today because that's, there's a bit of variance granted by the zoning board, correct? That's correct. We're only looking at the sales of packaged liquor as a special land use, correct? That's correct. So that issue has to be addressed first. We'll look at that. We'll discuss it. We'll hear from the petitioner and we'll vote on assuming they have, they get approved, then we'll go on and talk about the site plan. So I won't ask you the questions I have for you yet. We'll deal with the special land use first. Good evening, Mr. Gantina. Could you put your name on the record and state your location?
Woody Gantina in Royal Oak. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We now have a full commission here. All right, so is the petitioner present? I believe they are. I would like the petitioners to introduce themselves. Give us your name, your affiliation there. And you're asking for this relief and tell us, tell us about your request and why you're supporting it and how you're supporting it. Go ahead.
My name is Hassan Abdenou from GAV and Associates, with the architect on the job. And thank you for having us with you here tonight. And we're actually excited to do this project. We went through the previous meeting and really we're trying to do a nice project for the city of Royal Oak. We're trying to kind of make the site a little bit more maneuverable, the site more exciting, and the main thing is safe and more walkable site. We're trying to take one canopy out and extending the one and make it, a new one, make it look a little bit better, make the easy connection on the site and the circulation. And the way we designed the building, trying to kind of face Main Street and try to kind of hide the train station behind us and make people walking in front of the building a little bit more easy and safe. At the same time, when we worked with the building design, we tried to keep it looked like a retail. Actually, the front of the gas station is full of glass and the light at night makes it a little bit more safer to walk around the gas station. And you can see people inside, see the outside and vice versa, and the light works in a good way. And at the same time, we have a canopy to it that also can be safer when it's raining and stuff like that. So really, in general, we're trying to come up with a building that it's actually goes good with the downtown in Royal Oak and make it safer for the people in Royal Oak to walk around it and try to use it. Especially, we have all these apartments and stuff that actually the location of the gas station, we're trying to provide all the good things and the convenience stores to kind of make it easy for the neighbors and the people living on the street to make it more accessible and works better with the city. The reason for the alcohol, I mean, if this is the question, I think because this type of gas station, we're trying to provide all kinds of services in it. And the existing one, we had, the size of it didn't allow to put the liquor in it. That's why we didn't use the liquor license. And at the same time, we didn't feel like it's safe enough. The owner owned this building for 20 years and we never, we had the liquor license, but we never used it because we didn't think that this building is safe enough for us to put liquor in it. And the way now we designed it and the way we make it a little bit safer and attractive to people to park and feel more more convenient to the building. And also, we took out the two doors that we do repair, car repair. So we've taken even the car repair out of the building. So we're not, we don't have car repair anymore. It's mainly, it's a nice convenience store that we're providing services for the neighbors and our community and trying to make it a little bit safer for everybody. So now the owner is trying to kind of use his license that he had it for a long time and try to put it in this building and try to make it accessible for all the neighbors and everybody around. So really, that's the start that why we didn't use the license before and we want to use it. And we're trying to meet most of the codes and requirements that the city require and especially the state requires. The state requires better buildings, distance between the pumps and the gas station and the inside of the store where the cashier is. So we tried to meet all these requirements before we put the liquor license in.
All right, anything else for now?
For now, unless you have a question, we will answer for it. But for now, that's what we have.
All right, do the commissioners have questions for the petitioners? Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, well, I just want to thank you for taking the time tonight and, you know, doing this over Zoom and appreciate the thought and plan that you put into this project. It's actually right down the street from where I live. So I do have a question about, and maybe it's in there and I didn't see the fine print, but, you know, I know you're in the fossil fuel business, so this may be an unpopular sentiment in some circles. But, you know, we are seeing a significant amount of P-haves and electric vehicles and things like that. Is there any plan or infrastructure being put in place with your project or any intent to add charging stations as a convenience for the neighborhood? One, I think is a good business idea, but two, I think it helps fit with the mold of, you know, where the future of Royal Oak is going, especially with our demographic.
Actually, the way we're designing the building, the owner did tell me that at least to prep for three or four parking spots, that we can do that, yes. This is actually, the owner, he's in the oil business and most of the gas station he's building now, we're providing these spaces because really that becomes the future. And we want to make sure that most of the people coming to the gas station, they do have that possibility to use the electric charge, yes.
So that's a, it's not going to be there for the initial install that you're setting?
Yes, yes. Everything will be prepped. The owner do want it to be.
Okay, so that's a commitment. We'll have EV charging stations there then, right? Okay.
Absolutely. I think the owner is with us, Sam, and that's something that he's trying to use it on almost of his gas stations.
And I just think, I mean, not, you know, to get on just to add something, but I'm, I mean, you guys are obviously know your business inside now. And it's glad to hear you say that because I think about all the times where, you know, I wish I could have stopped there at the Shell station to get a cup of coffee and it wasn't really existent. And, you know, with a P-hub, you could just plug it in, top it off for 10 minutes, enjoy warm cup of coffee and on my way I go to work, an immense convenience for the neighborhood. And I think a draw to get people into your store. So go ahead.
Absolutely. That's why we're making the store a little bit, if you see the elevation, I don't know if the rendering is there. We're trying to make the elevation kind of very look like a retail. It's all glass in the front. We have a covered area. We might have a seating area if somebody want to stand and wait and they're all covered in case of terrain is there. So we're trying to make it as easy and possible for people to do that. And we're excited because, I mean, in my case, my kids keep walking in Royal Oak, downtown Royal Oak. So I want to make sure they're safe. And definitely, we are looking for that.
All right, are there questions for the petitioners on the special land use or we suppose we can segue into things? Ms. Bieke?
Since I saw one citizen concerned about the sale of alcohol, I wanted to ask, what will be the hours of the, of the store and the gas station?
I think will be 24 hours, I think. Am I right, Sam? You have to, you have to fix the, Sam, we can't hear you.
Unmute yourself, please.
Unmute yourself.
Can you hear me now? Yes, yes. Good evening, Sam Baydon, 39827 Gulfview Drive, Northville, Michigan. The hours of the stations, we prefer to go 24-hour, but really, we're not open 24-hour and none of our facilities, we open from 5:00 to 12:00, as far as retail hours, 5:00 in the morning to 12:00 midnight.
Thank you.
I'm just curious, you talked about your other facilities. Do you have other facilities in Royal Oak?
In Royal Oak, that's the only facility we have. The closest one to Royal Oak, we have one in West Bloomfield, right on Orchard Lake and Maple, I believe. This is the closest one to Royal Oak.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Well, I'd just suggest, Gary, you open a public hearing. I know there weren't any phone calls in, and as Ann indicated, there was one written communication, but I would suggest opening the public hearing, acknowledging that, and then you can close it. Thank you. Yes. All right. So with that suggestion, we're going to open the public hearing. We are going to request if there's any statements that we received. I understand from Ms. Schwanger, the answer is there is not, correct? So we're going to close the public hearing?
Correct.
Correct, then we'll move on. Thank you. So we're on this side of the table for discussion or further questions for our petitioners in regards to the special land use. There's any other questions about that? I guess I'd just be curious to ask another question of the owner. Do you sell packaged liquor at your other, at your other facilities?
We have, yes, couple, yes, one and today we have some. And out of my mind, I really, this is the only one I remember, but yeah, we do, yes.
All right, I guess another quick question is, I mean, every site is unique, but we did, we did get a rendering here. We did, is this, is this aesthetic something that you've used before? Is this new and unique to this, to this site?
This is actually unique for the, for Royal Oak.
Okay, well, I meant for you. And I wondered if you'd done this type of look before?
No, this is actually, we created just, we are in a downtown atmosphere. This is why we decided what that, what would that.
Okay, thanks.
The way we decided is because we wanted to be part of the downtown and have it a little bit more attractive to the people walking. So we make it that design. We used the nice brick, the metal to give it more like, more like a retail type or office type so to actually merge with the neighborhood and with the downtown areas.
All right, thank you. Other questions for the petitioners or for Mr. Twing? Or discussion? Or motion? Speaking? Or a motion?
I just wanted to ask, since the mayor brought up about the EV chargers, because I didn't know if we should ask now or the special land use. The other, the other two things that I was thinking about, and again, you can just bump them to the next discussion, that's where they go, is both bike racks as well as increasing the green space to meet the 10% threshold. But I don't know if that again goes with this discussion or the next part.
Well, it might, this is my opinion that it does overlap because one of the criterias is whether or not it'll be designed, constructed and operated to be harmonious with the surroundings. So that does factor in, but. If you want to add it, I would add it as part of a contingency to the site plan. Really, the special land use will deal with the liquor license, sales of the packaged beverage sales. If you want to allow that to occur, you can make a motion to approve the special land use and then you can get onto the site plan about any particular design criteria. So the question is, is there, that was a good question, but is there further discussion or motion? Ms. Bieke?
I have a question for Tim then. Tim, with your role in the DDA, I just wonder if you have an opinion whether the DDA would, do you think, I mean, be supportive of the special land use in terms of the alcohol sale? I personally am kind of, I could go either way. I can see the benefit to some of the apartments, et cetera. We do have a grocery store right nearby that does sell alcohol and we have lots of other venues. And so I'm looking for some kind of weighing factor that would persuade me one way or the other. And maybe from your perspective, working with the DDA, what you might think?
Well, I would not want to venture an opinion for a board. I've learned over the years, that's not a good practice. I can give you my own opinion, but I don't want to speak to what the DDA may or may not do. I will say that, you know, we have several places in the downtown that allow packaged liquor sale, one on Washington with the, the, I forget what it's called, but the small store there in Washington Square Building. So there are other locations that do provide packaged liquor sale. It's really a question is, do you see this location as an appropriate one? I personally don't have any objections to it as far as the planning background on it. So I couldn't offer you any direction in terms of a denial.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Mayor?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just say, I mean, that's a good question. We always want to be cognizant of those things. But, you know, and I got my, my favorite stores I go do to pick up my case of beer and, you know, favorite spirits and all that. And, and, you know, I think, you know, it doesn't, when I look at it, we have to look at what's best for the residents, not just the business community. And I think competition is always good. You know, I don't think it's going to grow alcohol consumption, but I do think that it helps all businesses rise with the tide to up their games. And if there are other folks selling liquor and this particular establishment does too, and they come with clever brands and clever ways to service the customer, then I think, you know, the people in the neighborhood win. And if one of them ends up losing, you know, that's the capitalistic system that we live in. But, you know, at the same time, we don't want to flood the market. But I don't, I don't think that, you know, the convenience there is going to, you know, knock into a lot of the broader sales. But, you know, if they do something right, then it'll get the other stores to step up. So it's always been a challenge. We had, I mean, this with Class C liquor licenses, right? And we had like two bars. And now we have a lot, great plethora of restaurants and all the other restaurants are doing better too. So great question, but I don't, I don't think, in my opinion, not that you asked me, Ann, Ms. Bieke, but, you know, just a little historical context there.
Yeah, thank you. That's just, I just wanted a little bit of discussion on that, that's all.
And I guess I'll just chime in is that the gas stations nowadays, most of them are moving to having a big retail component and having alcohol sales. And there was no public comments in opposition. So that also tells you something. Well, there was one, okay. So I think it's not unusual, it would not be unusual to have, to have this function at this facility. Is there further discussion or a motion? Speaking strictly of the special land use issue. Commissioner Douglas?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I find that the special land use meets the conditions described in 770-11C of the zoning ordinance, the conditions, the seven conditions listed in the staff memo. And so I move approval of the special land use.
Is there a second?
Support?
Mr. Curtis supported. All right, so we have a All right, so we have a motion to approve the special land use, a second, is there a further discussion? All right, seeing none, I will call for the vote. Let's start with Commissioner Douglas.
Yes.
Mr. Klooster?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Ms. Bickie?
Yes.
And Mr. Gantina?
Yep.
And I'm also a yes. So the special land use is approved, congratulations. Now we are going to shift our focus on the site plan, some of which has already been discussed. Mr. Twing, do you have anything, having heard the conversation here, is there anything else you want to add before we get into this discussion further?
No, I touched on the items from the staff report.
All right, I was, I'll ask you a question, I was a little confused, this is a downtown central business district. So a lot of, I mean, lot line to lot line is, is permitted, I assume, and we prefer to be out to the street, but there's also, you also mentioned in the staff report a number of open space requirements. I guess I'd like to know, I'd like to be sure that I'm understanding what the design criteria actually is, I was a little confused.
Well, you do have kind of a mixed bag on it, when you write up for a use, and I'll refer back to the gas station portion of it, which is a use that's not allowed in the downtown, in the CBD, and that's a use that the zoning board of appeals did grant. So the only reason that portion of the project is there is because of that use variance. Generally speaking, when staff writes up that report, they use the more restrictive criteria that would relate to that gas station and to some of the criteria there in terms of setbacks and, and, and or green space buffers. So that's kind of pointed out in terms of the buffer or the green space area. Because in the design criteria is from the central business district. So you're overlapping a use that's not allowed, but has some other criteria that's part of your consideration, so.
All right, so we have some flexibility here, is my understanding to grant or include some conditions if, if we wish, yes?
Yes, you can approve it as submitted, or you can make some modifications to it.
All right, so we heard a little bit from the petitioner about their site plan, and I guess I would ask if the commissioners have any questions? Or do you need more presentation from the petitioners? Anyone? Ms. Bickie?
I guess I can go back to what I was saying earlier and kind of put it, and add a question to it. So, so for me, and I walk by this space a lot, and so I appreciate the fact that this is going to be updated and kind of renewed, because I think it will enhance that corner a lot. And as we know, for, sometimes when everything's up to the lot line, it ends up creating wind shear, which actually is pretty bad right now on Main Street, a little further up where we have the hotel and some other taller buildings. So this gives kind of a little break, that setback, and the gas station's been there quite a while. I guess my comments will be the following, I appreciate you said that it's meant to integrate into the walkable neighborhood, and I think it does so pretty well, although the only curb cuts I see are for cars to enter. And so I just wonder if there might be a little bit more walking connection that could be made, although this corner is pretty sufficient. And then I say, if it were possible to have the 10% green space met, because that's important for us for both water capture as well as air quality, and then also whether there'd be consideration for adding some bike parking nearby the store, because again, a walkable area and a bikeable area, I think adds, especially with the convenience store. And then whether or not permeable pavers were considered some kind of, so there's less solid surface that doesn't, doesn't allow the water to permeate, since we have so much problem with rain and such, and it's only growing. So that general would be the bike rack, permeable paver, green space kind of overview would be my question.
Just to answer some of these questions, for the bike ride, I don't think the owner will have any issue with that. I mean, we can, we can add a bike ride and for that project. The reason for the 10% is kind of tight site. And the reason why we've been facing in different gas stations, it's always when you maneuver around the pumps, if you don't have an easier way to get in and get out, it's gonna become a nightmare. So really, we gave the minimum, minimum dimension for two cars to be able opposite to each other and to be able to maneuver. So we did keep 10 feet on one side and five feet on the other side. And we're willing, we're willing to work with you guys if you, if you add, we have enough landscaping kind of design in that process. And if you think that we need to add more shrubs or something like this that doesn't take the view out, we're willing to work with you on that, we understand 100%. But if I give you a tight site that doesn't maneuver very well, everybody's gonna hate that gas station, and it's gonna become a nightmare more than just helping. Actually, the existing gas station on one side, if somebody park and filled gas, there's no other person can maneuver around him. And that's been a nightmare for the owner and for the people coming to this gas station. So the new design really is to create that easeability for all the people coming to the gas station at the same time to maneuver. The idea of adding bike ride, I agree with you 100%. I mean, I am planning commissioner in West Bloomfield, and I go through the same process, and we would love to add more bike ride, and I don't think the owner will have issue with that. For the brick pavers in the gas station, maybe it might be the worst thing that you can ever do, because it might become a problem for contamination and it becomes, because you know, cars when they go to a gas station, there's a lot of issues. So we prefer to keep the site clean, and we are doing underground detention pond. And the engineer is with us here tonight if he has something to add. But the brick pavers, especially with the snow removal and stuff like this, it becomes very, very bad for the inside of the gas station. That's why where the pumps are mainly, we put concrete, even asphalt we don't put, because we want to make sure that people can come in, come out, and no issues is created in the gas station. That's kind of very important issues. And when you do the brick pavers or, or something, the ice stays in them and becomes very hard for people walking on that. But everything else, the walkability and with the bike rack, we don't have problem to deal with that part, even adding more landscaping if you require us to do it. We want to make sure, guys, you're happy, because the owner wanted to do this project for the last 20 years, and we're here in front of you to make you happy and the owner make happy, and it would be good for the city of Royal Oak in general.
Thank you.
Commissioner Douglas?
While your illustration does not show them, there are street trees along the main street portion of this site, which, Mr. Twing, I presume will remain?
Yeah, the trees will remain.
So, so.
Right.
So we have that added green feature supplementing what they've shown us in their proposal.
We can add the shrubs, anything you require us to do, so. We can work with you if anything needed to be added. But the trees is we wanted, we, actually, what the, with the trees, we're trying to meet the city requirement. They require so many trees in the frontage, and that's why we're trying to work with that.
Jesse, Jesse Parkinson here, Green Tech Engineering, just as an FYI, we spoke to city engineer at Royal Oak, and as part of the closure of the southerly drive approach on Main Street, they are going to require that we add another street, that'll be part of the review.
You, you're breaking up, Mr. Parkinson, could you just repeat that? You said that the city engineer is going to require what?
They're going to require that we have another street tree where we're closing southerly drive. Can you hear me?
Yes, I heard that, you're gonna add another tree there.
Yes.
And, and we're gonna meet all the city requirements, I mean, we're here to be, work with you, definitely 100%.
All right, and I got a question here, I mean, the rent, oh, Mr. Gantina, you go ahead first.
I was gonna ask the petitioner if they'd be willing to consider a green roof on either the canopy or some portion of the, the main building. Again, the, the green space percentage is, is one to make sure there's enough green space, but also takes into account the, trying to reduce the amount of impervious surface that we're creating, right? Most of the site is going to be hardscaped for obvious reasons, but we still want that infiltration issue to be resolved, the stormwater infiltration to be resolved to the best extent that we can. Would the owner, you think, be willing to consider putting a green roof on that canopy to help with that issue? And get you closer to the green space?
I'm talking structural issues and the canopies. If we want to put green, green roof above the canopy, that, that mean the structure is gonna become like you're designing a very, very tough structure. Usually that, I need columns in the corners, so it's not something that's gonna work. Because the way they design the canopies is very simple structure, and they don't add a lot of structure to it. For the sake of the building itself, actually, in that low kind of a building, and with the amount of mechanical system and exhaust and everything that's gonna be put on the roof, it's gonna become a nightmare. So in that type of project, it will be hard. Usually when we do green, if we're doing any building, and we did work with green buildings in the different locations, we have one area that we make all the mechanical system, and the rest of it, we'll try to make it green, so there's no interference. But in a small building like this, it will be very, very hard to, a project to do. And it actually becomes very, very expensive, because you have to trickle your structural. Sometimes it becomes hard to maneuver with that. But definitely, we're gonna make sure that the underground detention and the grass area, plus the grass area behind the building that it's facing the terrain track, we want to make sure that it's enough. And whatever we're gonna be doing on the building itself and the underground detention, that's gonna work. And we're trying to make sure that no water goes to any neighbors, everything stays on site, and we make it more workable.
That makes sense to me, I appreciate the explanation.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Klooster?
Yes, it, it appears that there's approximately six feet of space along the southern edge of the building between the proposed building and the lot line slash street sidewalk. I'm questioning if the petitioner would be willing to consider that as a landscape area, especially considering staff's recommendation of eliminating that mandor on the south side. Of course, maintaining the sidewalk connection to the front entrances and that corner entrance to maintain walkability, but get closer to that 10% landscape coverage, that is the zoning ordinance, zoning ordinance guideline. Maybe not get it all the way there, but.
Usually that door is only for egress issues, with, actually, is actually closed, nobody can open it from outside to get in. The only reason why we located that door there is for egress. But if we have to move it to the back, we can do that, it's not a big deal. We're not planning to have anybody, usually in the gas station business, we won't let anybody park on the side and get stuff in and out unless it's in front of the guy who's sitting on the cashier or the manager. Because usually in gas station business, you want to worry about people taking tanks. So this door is 100%, it's only for egress. If I have to put it back to the back area, I can, but nobody is allowed. Actually, during the day, nobody can open it, it's always closed. Unless somebody opened to the guy from inside, nobody can get to that door, it's only for egress purpose. If the city asks us to put grass there, I don't think we have issues. The only thing is, I worry about is walkability if the neighbors behind them wants the sidewalk to kept there. But in our case, as gas station design, we can go either way. And, and we like to take the department, the building department requirement and the planning. If they want us to do that, we can, if they don't, we can either, so we can work with you either way.
Mr. Klooster, continue.
Yes, so based on the contingencies that staff has listed there as part of the site plan approval, does the petitioner have any opposition to any of those contingencies?
The contingencies related to the grassy area and that area to add the bike rack and to add more shrubs if it's needed, I don't think we have issues. Unless you have something else, but that's the part that we're comfortable with providing.
The, the write-up from staff indicates 12 contingencies associated with the site plan review, and I'm referencing those.
We say we're gonna meet all these requirements, these are really in the code. I don't think we can change them unless the owner has something that he needs to make the sale area in the front a little bit bigger, because five feet really is very small. Really, you can't do much, because we might do wood, and we might do tanks, gas tanks, and anything else, and propane, and it's gonna need more than five feet width. But we do have to meet the requirement to be 10 feet away from the pumps. We need, we need, we need to meet the requirement to be five feet away from the front door. So we, we have to meet all these requirements that the city code requires, yes, 100%.
All right, I'm just, I'm gonna try to clarify here, if I understand what Mr. Klooster was suggesting, that there's a six-foot strip that is between the sidewalk and the building that could be landscaped with shrubbery or, or whatever. And that's, I think that's the strip he's talking about, given the fact that we're probably going to ask you to move the door to the back, that could be, that could be a landscaped area.
Absolutely, I did say that, yes, we're willing to do that.
Okay, good, and can I, just to get another clarification, your renderings don't show shrubbery along Main Street. They only show a few little pine trees there on Lincoln, but your landscape or L1 drawing appears, unless I'm reading it wrong, to say there's shrubbery in, in that, in that whole grassy, but it looks like a green area, but that's shrubbery, right? Because you gotta, you gotta have some screening.
Yeah, we're gonna go, we're gonna go with the plan, the plan is more accurate, whatever the plan says, we're gonna go with the plan.
Okay, so there'll be, there'll be shrubbery for screening purposes around that corner?
Absolutely, yes, low shrubbery does not close the, the view of the gas station, but it's just give you a nice buffer. And we're gonna work with the city with all the lighting that exists now on Main Street, and all the lighting and the trees is gonna be staying the way it is. And if something fixed, we're gonna fix them to make it a little bit attractive with the rest of the walkable area.
All right. You mentioned the lights, I, I, I hope Mr. Twing knows just how much I appreciate his comments earlier in this presentation about, about the lighting. But I have a question for Tim, are the, the petitioner will have to comply with the lighting ordinance. Are, are the LED window frame lightings, are they permitted under the ordinance? And does the petitioner have any thought that they might do that? Because I would, I would like to, I would like to make a contingency that that not be done. You know what I'm talking about, those very bright LEDs that go around the windows that some places put up.
Well, any and all lights would have to be in compliance with the lighting ordinance, no matter what they are. Based on the site plan, there are none depicted, there are none included, so I would say they're not entitled to put them up.
Okay.
If you're talking on the inside, Tim?
I, I think they go on the inside, yes, I think that's where they go. You see them in party stores quite frequently, where somebody puts up either, you know, a bright white one, or some places have the green ones. I would not, I would not be in favor of seeing that, I think it would ruin your nice looking building here.
Absolutely, the only thing they might put the sign open or closed or something, I don't see any issue.
All right.
I'm sorry, as an owner, I'm not in favor of that anyway, so I don't, wouldn't do that.
I don't think we're planning to put them anyway.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Mayor had a comment.
Yeah, and I know we touched upon it. We talked about shrubbery there for the screening. I think in this particular area, I I brought it up here once or twice kind of quietly, but you know, I've always had an issue with the brick screening. Everyone hits them and breaks them, and it just after like, a month, it looks like awful. So I just, as a contingency, if anyone makes a motion, you know, the petitioner sounds like it's much more affordable and more beautiful to add a natural shrub screening if it's required, that we just don't leave it up to the ordinance, but that, in fact, you know, save them some money and beautify the area, use the natural, especially since they have that that greenway there. I I think that would be something I'd be interested in making sure we memorialize. I think it's better for everyone, and, you know, I'd hate to see a brick fence go up there just to get hit by, you know, probably my car. Who knows?
I agree, Mr. Mayor, because really, they become nightmare and they crack all the time, and you need to do maintenance for them most of the time.
And I would just say that Mr. Twing's, the department's write-up says that one of the contingencies that landscaping and screening will be as depicted on the plans, and we just heard that the L1 sheet, L1 will be what's going to go in.
Unless you add a contingency to take the six-foot strip on the south end of the building.
Okay, and we may do that.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Mr. Kloster?
Yes, I would like to venture a motion. Let's see if I can get this on the first track. I would like to motion approval of the site plan with the 12 contingencies listed by staff, along with a contingency for a minimum of three bicycle parking spaces. Landscaping between the sidewalk and the building along the south property line. Landscape quantity and quality to be reviewed by staff.
Right, is there a second?
I'll flick on that.
Ms. Beaky seconds. All right, is there some discussion? I have, I just have a clarification, just for the record here. The rendering shows a freestanding sign. This is in the staff report. I just wanted clear. We're not approving any sign because there isn't a sign design that's been presented. So the site plan is, we're approving the site plan, and they're going to have to comply with the sign ordinance, but we're not approving a freestanding sign tonight. Is that correct, Mr. Twing?
That is correct. Contingency number 10 says they have to comply with the sign ordinance.
Okay. All right, very good. All right, any other discussion? Mr. Curtis?
I just want to be clear, because you mentioned the L1 plan versus the rendering. Sorry, this motion does not need to include anything about low shrubbery as a bit of a softening, because it's already in the plan. Correct? That's what I heard?
That's right. Let me, let me clarify that, too. Renderings are useless. They're pretty pictures for you guys to look at, but they're they're not part of the legal approval. It's it's basically what's on the plan, so.
Yeah, a rendering is not a brand.
Really, the plan to tell you how would the building look like, and just to kind of, because sometimes visual is important to make people.
I I I like having the renderings, but they're not a plan sheet.
Yes. They're not codes and requirements, yes.
All right. Okay, any other discussion here on the site plan motion by Mr. Kloster? All right, seeing none, I'm going to call for the vote to approve the site plan with the 12 contingencies, plus the two additional contingencies for the three bike parking space and the landscape between the building and the sidewalk, the six-foot strip on the south side. I'm going to call for the vote. I'm going to start with Mr. Kloster.
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mr. Gantina?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Ms. Beaky?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So congratulations, the site plan is approved with the contingencies, now 14 of them. And we wish you the best of luck. I'm looking forward to the upgrade. And and I use, this is right near my office, so I use it, I use the station. So maybe I'll pop in for a refreshment now.
You're more than welcome. Thank you very much, and thank you for your time.
All right, thank you.
Bless you, guys. Thank you for your help.
God bless. Thank you.
Bye, guys.
Bye.
Thanks. Have a good evening.
You, too.
All right, the next item on the agenda is a site plan, or a special land use, excuse me, and a site plan, SP 21-12-20. This is located at 4325 Delamere Boulevard. Mr. Twing, it looks like we have petitioners here. I see Mr. Mossev, and please give us a, give us a preview.
I was just waiting for them all to get.
They're popping up.
Yep, they're coming in. All right, you do have a request. The petitioner is proposing to establish an automobile service center for washing, polishing, and detailing automobiles within an existing building at the corner of Delamere Boulevard and Delamere Court. As I said, it's an existing building. There is no addition proposed. They're simply proposing to use that building in a in a new fashion. So you do have that in front of you. The special land use, as in related to that, in the industrial district, relates to automobile activity. So you do have the special land use report in front of you. Couple of the items that the planning commission would have to consider as part of that. The building itself, based on its component parts, which would include the service center, the service bays, the storage area, which includes the mezzanine, and the office area, generates a parking requirement, I believe it's 30, 32 spaces. The site plan itself is indicates 28 that are off-street. So one of the items the planning commission would have to consider as part of the special land use is whether you want to grant them permission to seek that parking variance from the zoning board of appeals. I would point out that there are five parking spaces that are approved in the right-of-way under a license agreement with the city, and designed by the city's engineering department. So those spots depicted in the right-of-way are are been approved under that agreement. Obviously, they're public spots, and they do not count towards the business use, and they are open for anyone in the public to actually use. So the first issue under that special land use is whether you want to or grant permission to seek the parking variance, excuse me. Just quickly to run through, I guess, the site plan items, just a couple of them. The zoning board of appeals granting the necessary variance, the petitioner's compliance with the proposed operation standards, and the planning commission's satisfaction with the screening and landscaping, that they are not proposing anything new. Basically, it's what's there is what's being proposed in terms of landscaping and chain link fence around the parking lot area. Other than that, we have our standard contingencies. So I think I'll stop there unless there's questions with me.
All right, any any questions for Mr. Twink from the commissioners? All right, seeing none, let us turn to our petitioners. And they're, well, I guess I do just have a question here, again, just for the record. We we have a site here that's in that's zoned industrial, and this is considered more of a service industry, I assume, and it isn't part of the definition of industrial, correct, Mr. Twink? And that's really what the question here is, we're going to allow this type of service industry use or service industry use at this industrial zone location, correct?
Correct. Under the staff report, item two, you'll see the zoning ordinance provision referenced specifically, and then automobile service type operations such as detailing, and and those things are a special land use in the general industrial district. So that's how they're they're listed. So you do have to grant that special land use in order for them to go forward.
There is a mention in the in the staff report about their existing building at 4300 Delamere Court.
And it's around the corner that they're moving out of to this facility.
There, okay, I guess we should wait to hear from the petitioners. They're actually moving from there to the new place. Okay, well, let's hear about that. Let's hear from the petitioners. Please introduce yourself and and tell us, give us your presentation regarding why you're asking for this relief.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. Yes, my name's Matt Lifter. Address, by the way, is Royal Oak. I'm calling in from here from Royal Oak, live in Royal Oak. So I'm asking for Motor City Auto Spa to have the ability to use a special, for you guys to agree to specially land use automotive, so we can expand our facility into Ron and Peggy's current building that we're in the process of of purchasing via land contract. And Ron, I think Ron and Peggy, or Ron is on the call as well, who is the current building owner. I currently, this is my third planning commission meeting over the years, 13 years ago, we did the 11-mile and 11-mile location crossing the YMCA, transformed that location. And then four years ago, we did the Delamere Court location. And I've, we're busy. And I have an opportunity with Ron and Peggy to help continue to grow the business and employ more people and all that fun stuff. So that's the plan.
Okay, so just I'll pop a quick question here, just to clarify. Would you, would you be vacating the 4300 Delamere Court or or using both of them?
Yeah, well, I own the 4300 Delamere Court location, which basically we're neighbors. The the parking lots are touching, basically. The corners of the lots are touching. So my plan is to potentially rent that location out, or actually grow the business and do one of my, I guess you could say, one of our services in that 4300 Delamere Court location. Let's just say paint protection film in the Delamere Court location, the auto detailing, window tinning in the Delamere Avenue location. So it just gives me the ability to have more cars. That's still, I'm still trying to figure out if I'm going to move everything into the Delamere Avenue location. But, you know, there's options.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right, other other aspects of the presentation? I see your architect there leaning forward.
Yeah, Andy is on.
Yeah, I'm I'm Andrew Mossev, Mossev Gordon Associates. We're at 4351 Delamere Court, directly across the street from the subject property. And we've done several buildings in this area that this area is not so industrial anymore. Obviously, my office is there, next door is a photographer. Then there's a Ronish construction along with the magazine. And there's half a dozen or more other auto-related facilities on Delamere and on the street west of Delamere. I can't come up with it right this instant. Friendly, not friendly, but we're, we're just, as as Twing talked about, we're just moving into the building, not doing any changes. They might have to change a exterior door. We're going to add a overhead door on the on the south face for access from the parking lot. And Matt, I think we'll probably work a little bit on the landscaping in the front along Delamere to clean it up a little bit. It's a lot of native species, maybe keeping those. But and that's where we are. And look forward to getting approved this evening.
All right, I guess I would just ask you about the the lands, existing landscaping. So you're you're not intending to leave it exactly like it is, you're going to upgrade it, or what kind of changes are you going to make?
Yeah, I mean, it obviously just needs some beautification, I call it. It needs a lot of trimming. We need to see what there really is after we clean it up. Probably new bushes, maybe trees. I think, I'm not sure, Andy, how wide the landscaping is. It might be, it might be 10 feet in front of the building. I'm not sure. So there's room to just clean it up.
Yeah, about 10 feet. It's a good, healthy depth of a planting bed.
Yeah. And and, you know, like 11 Mile, you guys gave us the beautification award, which was great. And so we're going to beautify it. I can't, I can't deliver beautiful, clean, shiny cars and not have the facility looking good. So.
All right, are there other questions for the petitioner? The petitioners from the commissioners? All right, is there?
Again, to just open a public hearing, I know there are any phone calls. There are, there are two written comments attached to the packet, but I'd open it and acknowledge that and then close.
All right, I will do so. Thank you. We'll open the public hearing. There aren't any verbal comments that came in, but there are a couple of written comments that were provided to us. And since there are no other public comments, we'll close the public comment portion of the meeting, and bring it back to the commissioners, and ask if there are further questions for our petitioners, Mr. Twink, for each other, discussion, comment, motion. Commissioner Douglas? Hope you're muted there.
Yeah, I'll move approval of the special land use. Hang on a sec. Zoom in. Based on the conditions described in 770-11C of the zoning ordinance, the seven conditions for approval of a special land use.
All right, is there a second? Mr. Kloster seconds the motion. This is the special land use portion of this of this issue. So the, is there further discussion on the motion to approve the special land use?
I would just ask for clarification that you are granting permission to seek the parking variance that's necessary.
Is that, that's part of the special land use? I mean, that's.
No, that's, you have to grant the permission under the special land use.
Okay, so.
Yes, my motion includes that.
All right, so the motion is to approve the special land use, including permission to seek the parking variance from the zoning board, seconded by Mr. Kloster, correct?
Yes, my second includes that as well.
Okay, very good. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I will call for the vote. Let's start with the mayor.
Oh, yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mr. Gantina?
Yes.
Mr. Kloster?
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Ms. Beaky?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. So you have an approved special land use and permission to go to the zoning board. Congratulations. Now let us talk about the site plan. Mr. Twink, having heard the discussions, anything further you want to add from your end?
Well, I touched on the three items. I would just indicate that if they are going to revise the landscape plan, that that plan be submitted to the planning office for a review and approval. So item, item three, under the contingencies, I would slightly modify to that effect.
All right. Okay, plan, the plan, plan to be presented to the department, yes? All right. Commissioner Douglas?
Mr. Twink, how tall is the chain link fence along the east side of the property?
I believe it's four feet. Architect can confirm that for me. I believe it's four feet.
It's no more than four feet. It couldn't even only be 42 inches.
Okay, thank you.
And I will ask a question of the architect. So there's no plans to upgrade that. It seems like it. And I will ask a question of the architect. So there's no plans to upgrade that. It seems like a temporary, the it looks temporary, but it's you're not you're not going to change it.
No, the no, there is no intent to change it. I think it was originally put in by the current owner to prevent semis from turning around in its parking lot.
Right. Okay, this Commissioner Douglas?
So when a motion comes along, I'm I'm going to suggest or ask that that chain link fence be replaced by something more attractive. And I suspect Ms. Beaky will have an opinion on the material of which it is made.
Any comments to follow that up? From Ms. Beaky?
I guess my specific comment I requested it's not vinyl. Wood or metal, but not vinyl?
It's
Due to the polluting aspect as well as aesthetic.
All right, I guess I would I would throw a question out to Mr. Twing. Is is there are there screening requirements for this type of property?
Probably that's up to your discretion as a planning commission under the ordinance.
Okay, it's a discretionary item, so we could we could require. All right. Other comments? I guess I'll direct comment to the to the architect again then. Did you consider upgrading that fence? And if you did consider it, what did you think about?
If if I may, real quick, interject. I understand like a short wood fence. My only concern is the vehicles pulling in and out. I'm just worried about not seeing somebody potentially walking. That's my only concern. I mean, if you need me to put a a four-foot wood fence along there, I do have a there's a gate currently and I'd like to keep a gate. But again, I'm just a little concerned about customers, employees going across that sidewalk. And with the park there, there's kids. I just don't, you know, it's not that far away. So that's my only thought is that you can see clearly through the chain link fence. That's my two cents. Andy, I don't know if you have any time on. Sorry.
I agree with that.
Okay, Ms. Beaky?
I'll ask a different question then because if it were to be a fence and it were not chain link, again, the vinyl is the one that I'm most opposed to because of the pollution elements in both production and long term. If if the purpose of the fence is more to keep big trucks from moving around, I wonder if there'd be any opportunity there to remove a bit of sidewalk and put some green shrubbery that would be not very tall, but create a little bit of green space and a much nicer aesthetic for the overall property, but still provide that block that a truck wouldn't want to roll in there because the fence itself, it doesn't contain the whole parking lot. So I'm just wondering if there's any room to maneuver in that direction. That would be nicer long term for all purposes.
Well, I putting in landscaping would cost us a parting space. I think Matt wants to maintain a gate there regardless because of you know, people, you know, he's entrusted with people's car automobiles. And, you know, he wants to keep them until the owners show up.
I see Mr. Ezzell, is it had his hand up? I certainly give you an opportunity to speak. You have to turn your you have to unmute yourself. Mr. Ezzell, you're muted. You have to unmute yourself.
There you go.
Okay, my name is Ron Ezzell, E Z E L L. I'm at ten eighty one Norwich, Troy, four eight oh eight four. I own the property at forty three twenty five Delamere. And my current my comment regarding the chain link fence is that that fence was installed under the direction of the engineering department of the city of Royal Oak after the CrossFit gym opened up. I had no way of controlling their customers parking in my parking lot. And when I went to the city to find out what I could do about it, they said install a fence, which is what I did. The secondary purpose was to prevent semi trucks from turning around in the parking lot and tearing up the lot. But the primary reason was based on the direction of the city of Royal Oak Engineering Department. And it is a metal chain link fence. It offers visibility and entrance and egress into and from the parking lot. That's all I have to say. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Okay, appreciate that.
I was gonna say thanks for the clarification because it's hard to tell and and I'm toggling between the plans on my other computer that the fence does surround the whole parking lot. In in the other picture, I couldn't see that, but thank you for that explanation.
But welcome.
All right, we have other questions on the issue or other questions for the petitioner? Petitioners? Is that another hand there, Ms. Beaky?
Just to close the circle on that, given the given the industrial zoning of this area, I don't have a problem with the chain link fence.
Anybody else? Commissioner Douglas?
So I'm sorry, did you did I understand that that your plans, I didn't observe this here, the fencing plans are to fence off the entire parking lot, including the south side along the CrossFit gym?
Uh, no, there currently are parking blocks, which I'm fine with.
Right, okay, that's what I saw visually, but I wasn't sure that what your plan was.
Yeah, and there's a slight elevation change, I think, in that parking lot too, which
Right, I can see that.
Yeah.
All right, any other comments? I have to say that are you going to stripe the parking lot?
Yeah, yeah, for sure. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think I have to wait till spring potentially, but I know that to get the CFO, you have to have it striped. But if it's bad weather, then we'll do it in the spring. We'll, you know, figure that out.
All right, I mean, the plan seems to show that. Yeah, the parking the parking lot is completely impermeable. There's there's no catch base in there. It's I assume it sheds out into the street. And it would be admirable if there was screening that had had shrubbery or something. We still have a gate. Because it's, but it is an industrial area. But this is my my comment that it seems to me there might be an opportunity to maintain security and yet beautify and have some permeable space there. Any other comments? Commissioner Douglas?
Yeah, I'm gonna make a motion here. And I'll and I'll preface it by saying that this is an area that is in transition as we see the park being built, the new houses being built in that development. Different uses coming into the area like CrossFit, more lighter industrial and and commercial and even, you know, semi retail uses. So I am going to move approval of the site plan with two conditions. One is that the applicant submit a landscaping plan and two is that they install a fence along where the along the east border where the fence is now of a height similar to that of the existing fence, but made out of metal or wood, but with spacing in it so that you can see through it. And that would be with the approval, administrative approval of the staff.
Is there a second? Ms. Beaky, is that a second? Okay, second by Ms. Beaky. So the motion is to approve the site plan with the listed eight contingencies by staff, including the addition of number three, that the landscaping plan would be presented to the department and that there should be a fence installed where there is already a chain link fence of the similar height of either wood or metal with spacing in the in the in fence. That's the motion on the table. Do we have discussion? All right, I don't see any discussion. So I'm going to call for the vote. I'm going to start with Commissioner Douglas.
Yes.
Mr. Klooster?
Yes.
Mr. Gantina?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
I'll go yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Hi.
Ms. Beaky?
Yes.
And I'm also going to go yes. And so the site plan is approved with the nine contingencies with number three amended. Congratulations and continued good luck to you. And I'm sure you'll be successful. You haven't been so far.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Look forward to how it comes out with the updates.
What's that?
I said I look forward to seeing how it comes out with the updates. I'm familiar with the eleven mile location and it looks good.
Okay, very good. Next item on the agenda is a sign variance SB two one dash one two one five. This is at eight one two South Main Street. This is to allow wall sign that's perpendicular. Mr. Twing, give us a give us a preview.
I'm waiting for the petitioner to show he's connected. I see. He's trying to connect with the auto, but I don't I don't see him.
Yeah. Looks like somebody's connecting.
Seems to be running for a few minutes here. I just I just sent him another email and see what's going on.
And that's Kay Kula's, that's the person, yes?
Yeah, Carrie, Carrie. Looks like he's in.
All right, there we go. All right.
Carrie, are you on the call?
He's muted.
Yeah, you got unmuted.
All right, here I am.
All right, welcome.
Sorry about that.
No problem. Your your issue is up. We're going to hear from Mr. Twing.
Okay.
Yep, just wanted to wait for you and make sure you got here. Yes, you do have a request for a sign variance at eight twelve South Main. The petitioner did apply for a permit to install what is termed a blade sign, style sign on the south facade of the existing building at that address near the entrance. The blade sign is approximately one point six feet in width by seven point two five feet in height and has a sign area of a little over twelve square feet. The sign would project twenty nine inches out from the building on the south side of the building. And it would have the sign copy run perpendicular to the building facade. Both of those last two items are what's the variance is related to. The building projects out beyond the maximum limit of twelve inches from the building. So a total of seventeen inches beyond that maximum requirement. And then the copy area is perpendicular versus what the ordinance requires to be I guess it's it's vertical versus perpendicular, so.
Right, right.
So that's really the request. The building department did deny the petition or the for a sign appeal and it's what we're here for.
All right, I have a couple of quick questions. Number one, I wasn't able to tell this. It says the building is being worked on right now, but is the sign over the right of way and is that an issue if it is?
No, it's not on the right of way. It's on the south side of the building, facing the parking lot.
Oh, facing the parking lot, okay. All right, not not that's it's not it's not on Main Street. It's on it's on the south side. Okay, great. All right. So those are the two issues. The 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 distance and the and the orientation of the verbiage, I guess. I would also ask another question. We've heard a couple of times that nowadays we can't read what's on the sign. But our ordinance says you have to have the letters be parallel to the ground. Is that what it says? Something like that?
I have not read anything like that in the ordinances. To be honest with you, I came into this project a little later. There was another sign company involved. But in my research on ordinances, it did not not allow a sign on the south side with that orientation. It was more of a the projection of it from the building, you know, they had a twelve inch maximum. And obviously, the and I'm advocating for the customer, of course. Just for viewability and so forth in the parking lot. And you'll have to forgive me, I do not have a copy of the site plan in front of me. I'm actually working from home. So I can't tell you what the distance is of that sign from the right of way in the parking lot, but just for viewability, that was the most practical application with that layout on that elevation.
All right, excuse me for a second there. All right, it was really a question. I appreciate that, but the question was really for Mr. Twing.
Oh, sorry.
The definition, we go back to the definition of a wall sign. We don't that's where that's where the language of the ordinance is that that is that issue here, yes?
Yeah, it's considered a wall sign and it is being considered a wall sign by the building division. The provision you're talking about is that is that a wall sign should be parallel to the building. The copy would run along the length of the building. And in this case, it's perpendicular to the building running up and down in terms of so that's one of the items that they denied it under. The second item they denied it under was wall signs can't project out from the facade more than twelve inches. This one projects out twenty seven inches. Or I said, excuse me, yeah. Twenty nine inches. So they need a seventeen inch variant in order to project out as far as it's projecting out from the facade.
All right. Are there, I'm gonna I'm gonna now turn to the petitioner and I'm going to ask the petitioner to tell us why this relief you're asking for is necessary or proper. Give us give us your presentation, please.
Oh, very well. Yes, considering the we already have a wall sign that will be on Main Street that is symmetry management. That is, you know, a wall, it actually is wall letters. And then the acre sign was simply an add-on. They wanted to make that. They wanted symmetry management to be prominent on the face of the building. The acre sign, they wanted to put back into the parking lot area. They want it to be prominent. But it was mostly about they want to have symmetry, have the strong branding on the front of the building. And then to have the acre sign also having some prominence, but set back away from the face of the building. Again, I was not not originally in the design portion of this sign. But the sign was built on practical application as far as uh, how it can be built, how it can be installed and so forth. Uh, I'm not saying there isn't some modification that can't be made to bring it closer to the building. Um, we're mostly just trying to brand the other uh, business within that building and that was the best solution for the customer at that time. And that's how it was presented to me and that's how I'm presenting it to you.
All right, I mean, so you don't have an answer, uh, perhaps of the origin of this solution. I mean, it seems like you could put a conforming sign there, but there's a reason why you're asking to be allowed not to. And that's what I'm looking for.
Right, and I apologize. I, I wish I had a better answer for you. Um, when this package was presented to me, it was simply this is the customer's desire. And they asked for me to, uh, you know, promote it and that's what I'm doing here in this meeting now. As far as a hardship, um, I guess the only hardship here would be in aesthetic, uh, really. Um, symmetry management is the primary tenant in that building. That's how they want to present the facade of the building. And the acre sign was, you know, to be, you know, secondary in relevance to the facade of the building. And so that's why they set it back where it was. I know that doesn't really you know, give you a solid hardship answer other than this was their desire and what they were looking to do. And that's really all I can say about that, you know? Um, I mean, I'm, I'm only advocating on their behalf because this is what they, this is what they originally presented for me to offer to the city to, 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 to look at.
Is, um, is, I can't tell from this, is the sign associated with the entrance of this business?
Uh, it is, yes. You know, uh, symmetry will be on the upper floor, acre will be on the lower level is my understanding. Uh, and so it was more of a practical application to put it there. Um, as opposed on the facade of the building. I don't know, and, and I don't have the ordinances in front of me, but I, I don't know that I can have, or they can have two signs, or if there is a place on the, like where they're putting the symmetry management sign. They built the, they did the building and all to accommodate the sign there where I can actually have access to and install the sign. I think that, I, I don't know that there is a section drawing I have that shows where I can put a second sign uh, on Main Street that would uh, call that out. I don't know they're allowed two signs on the same facade.
All right, uh, there are other questions for the petitioner, Commissioner Douglas.
Yes, Mr. Kula, does, uh, does the building owner, is that their parking lot?
It is.
Okay, thank you.
Any other folks want to address the petitioner? With questions or comments? All right, uh, how high, uh, I have a question. How high is the bottom of the sign off the grade?
Uh, let me see, I have the drawing here.
Ten and a half feet. Ten and a half feet.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Beeky.
I have a question that maybe Tim can answer. So, so to comply with the sign, um, ordinance, if that sign that's there, the size it is, if it were rotated and then attached to the building, either under the windows or over that, um, door entry, is the size of the sign appropriate even though it's at the wrong angle and the wrong orientation?
Yes, the sign's not too big whatsoever. If it, if it was a standard wall mounted sign, uh, they could put it on the building.
And to the petitioner's uh, query about whether it could go on the front of the building, it would not be allowed in the front as a secondary sign, um, it'd be preferred on the side where it is. According to the ordinance.
Well, I guess that depends on the design. You, you could have one sign with both companies' names in it. Provided it doesn't exceed 10% or 100 square feet. What you couldn't have is two separate signs in two different areas. Uh, but you could have one sign that lists more than a single tenant.
Uh, Mr. Curtis.
Further clarity there, uh, Mr. Tweng. That's, you couldn't have two signs on the same wall. You could have a second sign around the corner, uh, wall mounted.
They can't have, they can't have two distinct signs on one facade. Um, okay, two distinct wall signs. There are other types of signs that may possibly go on Main Street. Um, but you can't have two wall signs on the same facade. You can have a wall sign on every facade.
All right, thank you. I'm gonna, I'm just gonna make a, 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 sort of an observation, a comment here, sort of following up on Commissioner Douglas's comment. Um, so this is sort of an unusual thing for us. We've had these other blade sign, um, issues come before us. Uh, we've had, you know, they've been the main sign, they've been intended to, um, you know, project out and, um, usually towards the right of way. This is sort of unusual. This is an aesthetic design decision by this petitioner to tuck this sign on, in a place where, uh, it's over his own property there and, and I mean, that's really the question here. Uh, the, the violation about the orientation of the text. Um, that's quite another thing that we don't see very often. Uh, and what we've got as a petitioner says, this is my, this is my aesthetic solution. It's, it's, it's over my own parking lot, over my own door. Uh, I'm not otherwise a violation. That's what we're really looking at here. Now, we, I, we don't want to set bad precedents. We've, we've sometimes approved blade signs and sometimes we have denied blade signs. Um, and in this case, it's, uh, just, I'm just making the point, it's a little unusual because it's sort of tucked around the corner and it's on, on his own, uh, on his own property. Even though clearly, they could have a sign that is conforming. They'll have to do is make it flat against the building and turn it. But they're asking for relief on that on the aesthetic basis. So that's how I, that's how I see the issue. Any discussion, a motion, question for the petitioner, Mr. Tweng or each other? Yes, I'm gonna further comment by saying I, because of the nature of this, I don't think it'll be a significant precedent. I don't think so. Now watch, I, having said that, if we approve it, everybody will start doing it, but uh, there are other blade signs in the area, of course, right across the street.
Again, again, on the signs, I, I look to Mr. Klooster or someone else to make a comment, but from, from a usefulness and aesthetic perspective, and because it's over their own property, I personally don't have a problem with the sign. And but, and again, with the precedent issue, I think also this might be okay. Um, but I'd like to hear from other people who are more sign conscious than I am. Comment.
Um, I have a question for the petitioner. Is the sign lit?
It is illuminated. It's internally illuminated. It'll be a white face with vinyl translucent graphics.
Okay, do you have some way to know, I mean, there's a sign ordinance, there's also a lighting ordinance. And sometimes people tell us, oh, it's not going to be too bright. And then he sells them a, sells them a LED that blasts, uh, really bright and we can go around and I could go right around the, the, the town here and point out where people didn't keep their, uh, lights and their signs the way they said they were gonna. What kind of, uh, what kind of assurances do we have that somebody's going to be sensitive to the degree of light necessary for this sign to serve and use some purpose?
No, that's a very good question. Um, we've been in business a long time. We've been around since 1978. This issue comes up frequently. And um, what I can say is that we have very often, uh, gone to an LED uh, module that is, say, a warmer white. Uh, we will use fewer modules and uh, that's measured in NITs. Um, but yeah, I, I, I guess the only way I could give you an assurance uh, would be a physical demonstration of that, you know? Um, if you have a solid, um, brightness level that you would like me to maintain that sign at, I'm sure the customer would be uh, more than happy to accommodate you. Um, how I can adhere to that is, you know, it's, it's an invitation. It's to, you know, um, if you want to adhere to something and you, unless you have something in writing, you, you know, you wanted a certain brightness at a certain level, I'll adhere to that. If you want to come into the shop and see how we're lighting the sign up, I'm more than happy to show that off and you know, adhere to whatever standard you want to propose.
Uh, Mr. Tweng, do we have a, a lumens or a, or foot candles standard for lit signs?
Not specific to signs, but I think it would still fall under the lumens from this, from the light ordinance. So if it was creating a nuisance, which is where the light provisions and the noise, noise, noise provisions fall is under the nuisance provisions. So if the sign was a nuisance because of lighting, it could be dealt with under that and that lumens would be the same as that for any other light.
Well, and I appreciate that. And I guess I'm going to go back to the petitioner to comment that, look, you're asking for an aesthetic, uh, 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 relief based on aesthetics. And I'm telling you, when you've got a white acrylic background, you don't need a heck of a lot of light to make it look good.
You don't. No, you don't. Yeah, you're, you're absolutely correct. And I'm not here to, uh, blast this thing out into the street. I mean, the reality is this place is only for business a certain number of hours. And that sign be more of a marker as opposed to say a party store or something like that, that would be directly on Main Street. So, um, yeah, I, I can keep it under a certain illuminating level, you know, be pleasing. I mean, hopefully I can put it on a dimmer. Let's, the sign is installed and the city so well, and I could well, I can make it a dimmed LED.
Yeah, I think, I think from my point of view, the sign should not be used to light the parking lot, but should be only as bright as necessary to, to read the sign.
Absolutely, I agree.
Well, if we have that kind of, uh, I don't know how it'd be put in the motion, but I would be inclined to support the sign variance myself with a condition that that was the case, that the light was to light the sign and would not be um, would not be spilling out in the, as a, as a supplemental light.
Yes, that's more than fair. Absolutely. Yeah, I agree with that completely. Yeah, I'm, I don't want, I don't want, and they have other I'm sure they have other lighting for that parking lot. Um, they don't need the sign to be a part of that at all.
Commissioner Douglas.
Two-sided sign?
I believe it is only a single-sided sign because it only needs to face, uh, Main Street.
Right, okay, because, because the illustration in our packet shows two versions of this, one facing left, one facing right, leading one to infer that it's two-sided.
Huh, let me, uh, I'm sorry, not, uh, let me look at this really quick. Let me just, I'm sorry, I'm working from my phone. Give me one second. Uh, the drawing, yeah, the drawing I have does show a two-sided sign. Um, I'm not exactly sure why that's a two-sided sign. Um, I didn't originally design this. Uh, and I apologize, I should have more knowledge of this, but um, it does not need to be a double-sided sign. I
Right.
I mean, if it was, I mean, it's, if it's not bright, it's not gonna um, it'll face the parking lot, obviously. I don't see where that's doing them any good, but um, that's just what was presented to me and I apologize, I should have a better answer for that. Um, you're right, though, it, it really doesn't need to be a double-sided sign.
Thank you.
Mr. Klooster.
And so I'll comment as requested. So we tend to view, um, signage variances, um, primarily from a wayfinding standpoint versus a advertising or, um, potential monetary gain or inconvenience standpoint. Um, I could see an argument for that in this instance. If the petitioner was going to present one, um, if we, if we look at our grounds for um, granting variances, the 3A through G that's presented there, um, I have a hard time seeing how any of those have been presented this evening. Want to say it's peculiar, right? Because we're in the central business district and the, the blade sign is interior to a, a side lot parking area. If I look up and down the street, that's 90% of the property is adjacent. Um, so I, I don't say, I can't say that the character of this particular instance is peculiar or unique. I would, I would need to be convinced, I would say, that, that some of these make sense and that a variance should be granted. Um, for any of the purposes that we generally grant variances for. Um, and I don't see why we would strive from, from the ordinance, um, unless we were convinced that these situations require it.
Well, I'm going to say thank you for piping up there, Mr. Klooster, but I'm going to take a, 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 a little bit of a different, uh, view philosophically, just to uh, we, we have rules for a reason. We don't make rules if they don't have a reason. And what we're doing with the zoning ordinance is we're imposing restrictions on private land ownership and use. And the reason we do that is some public benefit, some benefit to your neighbor or the city or, uh, somebody else, because there's no, the, the public doesn't have a right to impose on a private landowner without a benefit to them. That's what the balance is. Go back to the slaughterhouse cases. Um, so I'm having a hard time figuring out what the public is getting out of enforcing this against this petitioner. I agree that the way the ordinance is written, there's no way this petitioner can meet the criteria. But I'm wondering if the public has come here with a with the benefit that they, that they're getting out of it, other than just to, to deny this, uh, petitioner their chosen aesthetic solution. So I just throw that out there. Ms. Beeky.
I'll comment that again from, from, in my perspective, from a way, wayfinding, the blade sign is more helpful if you're walking or approaching the building because you can see it much easier, especially when it's lower. And the higher sign in the buildings, as we have in, in a lot of the walkable areas are too high to even see. Um, and so I think we need some work on those perspectives in, in our current ordinances. Um, and again, in this particular case, I think this sign seems appropriate. And if it were attached to the building, it would make it harder to see as you walk up to see that business is there. Um, but that argument might also say it should be on the front of the building. Um, but again, from, from a visibility standpoint, I see the blade sign as logical in this place, but anyway, that's my perspective.
Mr. Klooster.
Um, I, I could also argue that the blade sign in its current position means that a vehicle doesn't see it till the last minute and potentially causes a hazard. And so I, there's lots of arguments you can make. I'm not the petitioner. I could also argue that the intent or the character of the ordinance is to not have blade signs overhanging the right of way. But again, I'm not the petitioner. So unless I'm convinced that 3A through G applies here, I don't see why we would vary from what the ordinance prescribes. For size.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? All right, is there a motion of some kind? Either to grant or deny the request? Mr. Klooster.
Uh, this is more of a logistics question for Mr. Tweng. If we were to let's say, table the item and ask the petitioner to come back next month to go over the hardships listed here, three A through G, would that allow them to come back without going, paying for applications again? Or basically killing this option and forcing them to come back with something different?
Well, you can clearly table it or postpone it till next month. The petitioner could ask you to postpone it till next month to do so as well. So yes, you have that option. And so, so does the petitioner.
Mr. Curtis.
And just to clarify, and the option to put it off to next month means the petitioner wouldn't have to pay another fee. They have the same case number. They've just come back in 30 days or whatever without any more costs.
Yeah, you haven't, you haven't dealt with this case if you postpone it. It's so anyone that had any interest on this case would be acknowledged that it's held over until next month. So they would not have to add another fee to it.
Commissioner Douglas.
Well, that says maybe, but I'm going to try this motion, and that is a motion to deny the variance for the reasons Mr. Klooster has described. They do not meet, do not meet, nor have they made a case as to why they do meet the conditions as described in the staff plan. Certainly, there is room on this building for them to put up a lighted sign that identifies the business, but that does not project. And so that is why I'm making this motion.
There a second? Mr. Klooster, seconds. So the motion is to deny the request for relief based on the failure to meet the criteria, correct? All right, is there discussion? Mr. Curtis.
Yeah, I would be inclined not to support the motion simply because I would like the petitioner to have the option to come back if they could get a better argument together, if they wanted to. But that's up to the petitioner. They certainly haven't expressed an interest in coming back, so.
Appreciate that. I have to say, as I said in my, in my comments there, I don't think the petitioner can possibly meet the criteria. So bringing them back, I don't know what, what good that would do. This representative already said it's an aesthetic issue. Basically, we like the way it looks is what we want to do. That is not meeting the criteria, but that is, I don't, I don't know that they can do anything else. I'm not, I'm not convinced they can do anything else, so I wouldn't be in favor of bringing them back. That would be a waste of time. Question is, do we deny or based on, based on the criteria, or do we, or do we not? So we have a motion, and I think we're getting to the point where we want to take a vote. Are there any other comments by any of the other commissioners? We appreciate all such comments. Okay, hearing none. I am going to call for the vote, and we're going to start with Commissioner Douglas, your motion.
Yes.
And Mr. Klooster.
Yes.
And Mr. Curtis.
So.
And Ms. Beeky.
Yes.
And Mr. Mayor.
Well.
And Mr. Gantina.
I'm a yeah.
All right, well, I'm a no. So how does that add up? I think it passed, right? We have four yeses and three no's. So the motion has passed to deny the relief. So, Mr. Kula, I'd love to be back to the drawing board.
That sounds okay to me. I appreciate your time tonight.
All right, thank you so much.
All right, have a good evening.
All right, so the next on the agenda is, we're going to look at the notice of the draft master plan from Clausen. And then we have actually two more items that I think to talk about. We're going to get an update on Woodward Avenue from Ms. Beeky. And then I think we do need to take a minute to talk about the next meeting. But Mr. Twain, tell us about Clausen.
That's really an informational item. Communities are required to notice adjacent communities when they're going through the master plan, as Royal Oak will do when we start to go through that process a little more. So there's no action necessary, just a notice for your information.
So, Joe, I have a quick question, just out of curiosity. So this, we're going to update our master plan. When do we have to send this? After, or we already sent this out to the other communities, this sort of a notice?
There's a basic step in it. I think we'll do it when we've cleared that the, there's going to be somebody under contract to proceed. I don't want to do it and then not proceed for some reason.
Okay, that certainly makes sense. And is there, now that you mentioned that, is there any update on the RFP, where it's at?
We are getting inquiries. I don't have a specific update on how many will be in. But we can certainly send that out to you as soon as.
Distributed?
Yes, we'll get you the links and we'll distribute it.
Okay, is there a, there's a deadline for submission? I can't remember. Is there, is there any other step before the competitors submit?
No, they'll submit their RFQ responses and then we'll start going through them, so.
I misspoke. I said RFP, it was RFQ, yes.
That's the next step.
I thought there, isn't there a step where they, the question and answer is that, I thought that was before they submit, no?
Well, they may have questions of staff in terms of clarifications on what the RFQ might have to say. But that's part of the RFQ process.
Right. And just for a reminder for the public, when are the, when are the responses due?
I, I don't, I don't remember off the top of my head.
January, but I can't remember.
Okay. Very good. All right, Ms. Beeky, you're going to give us a little update on Woodward.
Right, a couple of different times I've mentioned, and all of us are probably aware that Ferndale and Pleasant Ridge are working on moving beyond their 35-mile speed limit to doing other improvements on Woodward Avenue while it's being repaved. And I was looking up today and I learned from their website that actually the repaving by MDOT is going to be from eight mile all the way to 696. But we don't have information when Woodward Avenue on our side would be paved. But as the mayor had mentioned last time, if we were to want to work on Woodward Avenue, this is something that needs kind of pre-planning and some organization on our part to negotiate with MDOT and try to work on some of those potential improvements. And we've talked a lot about, and we did those this last time. For example, the noise on Woodward, the difficult people of seeing businesses on Woodward because the speed limit's 45, yet they drive 55 or 60. And also people have talked about the vacancies we have and such. And so I think there's an opportunity as a community to think ahead about how we might prepare ourselves to negotiate and get in touch with MDOT. And so I reached out to the city manager and mayor of Ferndale, and the city manager said he would get back to me and our city manager, just to let us know who we might, who he recommends based on their process are the best people to talk to in that sense, if we would want to talk about it. And so that's the main thing I wanted to mention. And with regard to noise, which we talked about last time, part of the justification of that car wash was that it's going to meet the noise, that we already have a noisy road and therefore it's not going to be noisier than. But the decibels that we have on the road, and I don't remember the exact parameters and the numbers we were talking about, but those numbers are already loud and damaging to human health. And so I think, thinking about the noise and the pollution of Woodward is something that we should take into consideration as a community issue, improving both the businesses and homes that are along there. And so I just wanted to mention that, and I'll let you know when I learn more from the city of Ferndale.
And let me ask, is Ferndale, the Ferndale Strip there from eight mile to 696, are they going to do anything different, or are they just repaving? Are they going to install any new items, or what are they going to do? Do you know?
The plans they have online, and I can send a link to all of you afterwards. The plans they have online show they're adding bike spaces, bike lanes of some nature. I'm sure they're going to be protected, obviously, given the nature of Woodward. And they're combining some bike lanes into the alleys that go along where is more appropriate. I just glanced at it. Oh, and the other thing I wanted to add is there are plans from 2014 starting, and there are several that have been done, including our strip of Woodward, that demonstrate how we could modify and make it safer. And so I just think that some legwork has already been done and money been spent on this. And I just think we should think about how we can interact with MDOT to our benefit. Detroit has also had a lot of success when they've gotten in front of MDOT to add bike lanes where they want to, or some other traffic calming. And as we know from lots of different corners, it's not about the speed limit posted, but the road design that actually influences how drivers behave. And so I just think we should work on that.
All right, are they, are they going to eliminate a lane in, on Woodward and the Ferndale to get these bike lanes? Or I guess, if you send us the link, that would be good.
I don't know the details, because I didn't look at it closely enough. I just know they're going to be doing traffic calming. It might include reducing a lane. I think they already have one less than us as it is. But as you know, like they've done on nine mile, they're, again, trying to enliven the bike and walk accessibility along that corridor.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions for Ms. Beeky, from the rest of the commissioners?
I just wanted to say thanks for the update, and I look forward to seeing that link. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on, the next thing that I wanted to add to the agenda, I should have mentioned this, but we, this will be our last Zoom meeting, as I understand the order that, or the ordinance that has permitted us to have these Zoom meetings, which we've taken advantage of, is going to terminate at the end of the year, if I understand. Anybody can correct me. So we will be in person at the City Hall in January, correct, Mr. Twain?
Yes, and the city attorney is on meeting tonight. If, I'm sure that's my understanding, is January's meeting will be in person and all meetings after that will be in person.
Mr. Curtis.
I had a question because I understood there was a mask mandate at City Hall. Does that expire the same way our ability to meet remotely expires? Or do we leave in place a mask mandate in January and going forward?
Well, the mask mandate is really coming down, my understanding, from the city manager's office. So unless he lifts it, you know, he's given that direction. And while the city employees are wearing it, the public is not being enforced if they came in without one. There's no one demanding that they put one on.
I guess my question would be for the attorney. Apparently, our ability to meet remotely expires at the end of this year because of some law that expires at the end of this year, or some order that expires at the end of this year.
It's part of the Michigan Open Meetings Act. So we were granted the ability to meet like this for over a year. But that, that
That executive order.
Basically has a sunset provision that expires at the end of the year, so.
But that, but that, my question is, that doesn't affect the city manager's ability to create a mask mandate? It's two separate things, right?
It's two separate things. That's Open Meetings Act, so it's your ability to conduct meetings, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that was one of my questions. If there are COVID protocols for such a meeting, and it sounds like there are, just for everybody's knowledge and edification here, is that, so what I understand, and I, is that there is a mask mandate for the meeting, although loosely enforced. We would hope people would adhere to any, any sort of rules that were put in place. But that's what I want to talk about. I want to talk about what the rules will be. We have seven commissioners. I think there's more than seven seats there. We can certainly be spread out there. And I, I'm not sure what the rule is about the masks. Will we keep our masks on while we're talking, or is this like a restaurant? Do we take our masks off when we're at the, at the table? Is there, is there a protocol, Mr. Neal?
I think the protocol would be very similar to what the city commission currently does at its meetings. You know, all the, all the commissioners, including the city clerk, city manager, and myself, we're all wearing masks throughout the entire meeting and speaking through the masks. The microphones are very good to pick, be able to pick up your voice through the, through the mask. The, most of the members, I get to see a member of the public, you know, at any of the city commission meetings that isn't wearing a mask. I know that there are some special circumstances or a relaxation of the mask when a speaker comes to the podium. That's within the mayor's privilege, but otherwise, you know, most people will wear the mask during the meeting. So it's, and you know, you have Commissioner Douglas here, as well as the mayor. I don't see the mayor anymore, but, you know, she could add anything that I may have missed as far as how meetings are going with the city commission.
No, that is, he is correct.
All right, I got to go out and get a good-looking mask now, instead of these disposable ones. All right.
Anything would be an improvement.
All right, Ms. Beeky.
I just wanted to make a comment that, again, especially if the mask mandate is still in force, I feel comfortable coming to the meeting and giving it a try. One thing I would like to say just in general is a comment about citizen participation or community participation, given the ongoing pandemic and with the information coming out that, again, 70% of cases with the new variant have been breakthrough infections. And as we know, Michigan is in the worst condition of all the states. My hometown is Saginaw. The hospitals are, actually have the federal assistance because the situation is so grim. And so, A, I hope the mask mandate stays in place and that people are abiding by it. B, I think, given the technology that exists and given, again, I've been to conferences in Cuba and London and all during this pandemic, there's so much more technology in place. I just wonder and want to put out there, mostly for the mayor and Commissioner Douglas to think about from, from a city commission perspective, should we be seeking out hybrid participation for the long term? Not only for this pandemic, but also for people who might not have mobility, where they might want to attend, but they can't, and just, that's just something to put out there as a consideration for long-term human rights and citizen participation. I think the technology is with us that allows it, and it would help minimize these kind of issues when things are in person. Anyway, I just want to make that comment.
All right, thank you. Other comments or questions pertaining to next month's meeting? All right, I don't see any, so we'll move on, but I will say, all right, well, we may have other questions. We'll send them by email. But, all right, any other, any other comments, issues from any of the commissioners? Mr. Curtis.
Sorry, I was moving my microphone so I could be ready to make a motion to adjourn when you got there, sorry.
Is there a second? Yes, there is, okay. We, we can, we can vote by acclamation. All in favor of adjourning, say aye. Aye. We're officially adjourned. Thank you so much. We'll see you next month.
Happy holidays. Yeah, happy new year.
Happy holidays.